Elijah Steins won the state championship in collision repair technology before going on to claim his second consecutive gold medal at nationals. And whereas Cooper Shanks won the state championship in job skill demonstration open before going on to earn his first goat gold medal at nationals. And whereas Madison Warren was named a state champion in collision damage appraisal and went on to place fifth in the nation. And whereas Morgan Grant was named a state champion in prepared speech and went on to place in the top 20 in the nation. Whereas these remarkable achievements reflect the student's dedication, talent, and discipline, and bring great pride to Unaca High School, Carter County, and the state of Tennessee. Whereas the continued success of these students also reflects the leadership and mentorship of their teacher and Skills USA program administrator Scotty Johnson, whose commitment has guided students to excel at both the state and national levels. Now therefore, I, Patty Woodby, Mayor of Carter County, Tennessee, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, do hereby issue this proclamation on behalf of Carter County and its citizens to extend congratulations to Elijah Steins, Cooper Shanks, Madison Warren, and Morgan Grant for their outstanding accomplishments and commend them for bringing pride and recognition to Unaca High School, Carter County, and the state of Tennessee. Congratulations. (applause) Shanks. Elijah Stein. Thank you very much. This just portrays the outstanding commitment to Carter County schools and the students, and we're super proud of you guys and the hard work that you do, so thank you very much.
To say a quick word, guys, in front of these kids, I don't want to take too much time, but winning nationals, I hope it happens next year, but we may never do this again. Like, you've got students right here that's the best in the nation. It's not single A, double A, it's the best in the nation. We don't get categorized as that. So we go back to the David and Glass story. I tell them about taking opportunity, and it don't matter where you are or where you come from, you can be the best in the nation. We try to live and, and coach by outworking them. So when we outwork them, and the results will follow. And I'm proud of my kids. Thank you all for the support. (applause)
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Teacher in Carter County, it makes you proud, right there.
Yeah, it sure does.
All right, we're on number nine. Split the minutes from the July 21st meeting. Other any comments? Let's vote. Your pro?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, now we'll vote on the minutes from the office seven, special call meeting. Dr. Thomas made motion. Are there any comments, changes?
I got one. I never have one, but I would change that to special call session at the top. Office seven, meeting minutes.
George, do you need?
Is this a correction? I mean, you can go forward.
This is new.
It pulled up. George, did you need to speak? Pulled up on. There's no discussion below. Your pro?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. For approval of bonds and notaries.
Angela Gell Higgins, Anita J. Alford, Amy McMillan, Jacob Street, Kimrae Chavez, Rebecca Ann Bennett, Zachariah Lee Ford, Jonathan Hodfield, Rutha S. Duffield, and Ms. Smithfield, Rutha Casey, Rebecca Robertson, Camilla Campbell, Charles H. Baker, Ginger Holren, Alexandria Fields, Julie C. Spot, Gregreep Peters, and not on your list is Melissa Green and Richard Line.
Can't make the motion. We have a second, okay? Mr. Fraser, is there any discussion? Motion passed. Finance director for four.
Good evening. Your financials are in your pocket. I will remind you that we are still in the process of closing out fiscal year end, so keep that in mind as you do your review. That should be completed in the next couple of weeks. I also have up here, if anyone wants to come by and get a copy of it at the break, the emergency spend report, that was not completed in time to go through committees, but it has been completed as of today. I have added a couple of additional features on that, and that is stuff that we are in the process of getting reviewed and hopefully soon approved by TMA for rapid funded projects. So that is part of this report as well. The last thing to add is we are in the process of doing some of the road work, so those funds are being taken out of the loan proceeds, so those will not be reflective of the fund balance, will be shown like lower in the report, just like we did with the Hill one. So if anybody wants to come by and get a copy of it at the break, they're welcome to do so.
Any questions? Okay, we'll leave the farmers market update, and I apologize because I did not know the producer's last name, but he said.
Donna Krebs.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Donna Krebs. I'm the market manager for the Elizabethan Farmers Market. At the beginning of this season, I had come and asked for funds from the Carter County Budget Committee, and they approved us, and we're very thankful for that. We are, I guess, still waiting on the funds for the, you know, everything. So I just wanted to give a little mid-season update. We were just recognized, and I should have brought it with me, that would have been a handy little prop, but just recognized by Representative Renee Jones and Senator Rusty Crowe at the Farmers Market a couple weeks ago for just outstanding leadership in agriculture and pioneering the farm-to-table community in Carter County and in Tennessee. So we actually got some paperwork from that, and I wish I'd thought to bring you with me. But thank you all for your open support for all of that. I also just wanted to give a little bit of an update. When we did ask for those funds at the beginning of the year, we had indicated that we hoped to use that to benefit our SNAPUT program for the Farmers Market so that people in the community that utilize that program can come and spend the SNAPUT benefits at the Farmers Market. I don't know if it was our location change or just the, I don't know, demographic change in the last year that really contributed to the decline in that program, so that program almost did not run at all for the whole month. No, no citizens outside of five people used it out of 57,000. So we ended up having to actually suspend that program. I'm hoping that we could bring it back next year, but honestly, there's just the same amount of interest in it as it was this year that we're probably not going to be able to because it was just not physically responsible, a program that was not being used. So I did want to just give a courtesy update for you guys about that because that was something that I had really hoped before the year started that we would be able to utilize those funds for. Those funds were not allocated, so it's, it's not like it had to go to that program. So I'm going to roll that into maybe some other benefit programs. The Farmers Market obviously is about helping farmers, so 20% of our vendors right now are veteran-owned, so I was thinking of some options maybe to sponsor those veterans vendor fees for the year, so maybe you can. I'm actually really open to ideas for how to use those funds because we are fortunately very, very fiscally solvent right now. We don't need those funds for anything in particular to make the market run. The Chamber's done a wonderful job of helping us, you know, continue to run this program in very effective ways. So thank you all again so much for your support. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. If you have a band, you need to have.
Number 13, the UT Extension Office.
Hi, everyone. Just a couple announcements, and then my coworker group is going to share some information about agriculture that's really important. First, want to say that we appreciate your time and attention in the search for a new office space for us. I know there's many people looking for a space, and we really appreciate the dedication that you put towards that. We have a new family and consumer sciences agent. Her name is Lucy Timms. She's back there. She has joined us. She's going to be taking over the family and consumer sciences programs, and she actually has several years of extension experience from Carter County. She's got a really strong nutrition background, and she's already jumped in in planning programs and meeting people in the community. So we are really, really looking forward to having her in the county, and I know she's going to do a great job. As far as 4H goes, Roger Clark, our 4H agent, he is at the fair tonight at the 4H building. Over 3,200 entries in there, so a lot of those are from Carter County. Go by and check those out. In-school clubs are starting soon, and we are looking forward to continued expansion of that program, and we'll be hiring a new program assistant, which is funded through the county, fully funded, so we really appreciate you all funding that as well. September 1st is my last day, and Kathleen Davis will be taking over for me as director. So I'd like to let her come up and share some about our agriculture programs.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I'm really excited about my new position as we transition in. Rachel's played a great foundation for me to step into that. I was asked to give you an update on agriculture, so the first thing that she is going to pass out is the Farm Field Day, which we'll talk about that. That works with the UTIA, so that was the initiative after the flood. I also want to give you some updates what we did as a county and how we participated in helping producers and farmers. I know you all know a lot about what went on on the non-ag side, but I want to make sure you know what happened on the agricultural side. I'll also be giving you a save the date for our Farm Field Day. We're going to work with several speakers to get producers their chemical points for applications, so they're now required that by the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, so we want to make sure that we're providing that. So we're going to host that, a lot of speakers, but I'll go more into that in a minute. I want to take your time. I know you all are very busy and have a long agenda. So Helene happened, we all know that, right? So we were making sure farmers could keep farming. We wanted them to be able to continue that. So we have distribution centers that started that. We started in Happy Valley, lower into Shell Creek. NRCS office had a distribution site, and obviously the Farmers Market helped us out in that regard, helping farmers as well. We were one of the first ones to take a lead, Carter County was, so that's exciting, and both, I'm proud of us for that. And then we moved it to the fairgrounds and the Bristol Motor Speedway's. Then it moved into Wright Screen. After we completed at Wright Screen, it moved back to those original four locations. Again, Carter County heading up that project, so we're thankful for that. We want you to know that there are several thousand rolls of hay that came in here from various locations, so those included Texas, Pennsylvania, Canada, Kentucky, and Florida. And that's not all. I mean, they, they kept rolling, and it was quite impressive. And probably the most infamous point in that was when the lady from the cattle mafia stopped me. Yes, I know, it sounds creepy and crazy, but yes, she's a part of the cattle mafia, and she came to me and she said, "I want to help, I want to help Tennessee." She said, "Because when we had our wildfires and we had our floods, Tennessee was the first one to step up and make sure that we were taken care of," she said, "and I want to pay it back." She said, "All of my farmers want to do that as well." So it was farmers helping farmers, and we're very thankful for that. Not to say there weren't some others involved, but we're, we're a very strong community, and we want you to know kind of what we were doing. We know everybody else is taking care of the human aspect of that, but the livestock needed care as well. So there were miles of wire that were handed out, several thousand posts went out to the community. The Agricultural Crime Unit, which is through the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, they did flyovers to do animal welfare checks. We also were able to coordinate with some of the commissioners, were a part of that as well. They worked with us to make sure that we got to people who were cut off from basically communication other than those people that they were able to communicate with. They got to us, and we were able to ask producers that had access to those needs to get those to them through Black Hawk helicopters in different areas. We also were able to apply for the 2025 Seeds of Hope with Farm and Forest Families. This is a program through the Tennessee Farm Bureau. We were able to get 8,500 acres of seed up to the seven counties that needed, so that included Johnson, Unicoi, Carter, Washington, Green, Cock, and Hamblin. And then also, it's just crazy that the list keeps going, and this is only just a snapshot of all the things that went down. But through the EWP programs with the NRCS, which is the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and the Soil Conservation District here in Carter, we were able to fund $1.6 million for the roads. So they're working about the undercutting and streambank restoration, and that was signed off by, the mayor was able to sign off on that and allow that to start to take place. So that's streambank restoration that's going to be happening. Your ag entities met together, and we still meet. So Helene started this mess, but we continue it on a regular basis. We meet at least once a month, and we talk about needs that might still need to be met. And as of now, we believe that we've met up to 90% of those needs to this point. So that's pretty impressive and really neat that we were able to do that. We had 30 farmers in Carter County that participated in that grass seed project, and 36 farmers that reached out to us to begin with. Some of them decided that they didn't need to be a part of the grass seed part, they just decided they weren't going to put that back in seed, or we maybe didn't offer the variety that they wanted to put back in that location. And then if you want to just go ahead, the flyers, you can read those, I'm not going to read to you, but the Field Day, it's coming up on August 20th, and that's down in Limestone. We're actually going to be on one of the farms that was affected by Helene, and then they're just going to go through different things, how we restore those ground grounds, how we were able to go forward in movement and be able to grow those grasses, be able to put up our hay production, continue those things, different things we've kind of discovered, the new weed varieties that we now have, because although it was great to get all that hay to you in Tennessee, we've now introduced some varieties that we may or may not have in abundance before, we're starting to see some of those and look at those different things. It's okay to plant in certain areas, you can see the skip, so a section will be fertile and then a section won't be. We're going to talk about why that is, and that'll all be covered on that August 20th date. And then September 6th is our Farm Field Day. We want you to come out and join us, you're welcome, everybody's welcome, you don't have to be a farmer, participate in that. Just RSVP to the number or email the, email at the bottom, and we'll be happy to have you attend, but thank you so much for your time.
Director, we thank you, and we'll be pleased.
For the mayoral report, I have some guests here. We're going to talk about the collegiate bass tournament that Carter County has been blessed to be able to host. If I could have Luke Freeman, Alicia Phelps, and you. I'll introduce them, and we also have Glenn on teams. He is the Bassmaster Pro that's going to be hosting this collegiate tournament in Carter County. Dennis Tomlin is a representative from the State Tourism Department, is going to kind of tell us a little bit about what this means for Carter County, what it's going to do for Carter County. Alicia Phelps is the director with Northeast Tennessee Tourism, and Luke Freeman, of course, is our local tourism director, has, has played a big role in helping me get this tournament up here to Carter County. I'll start it with Dennis, and I'll let you go ahead and open it up and tell everyone what we've got going on and what all this will entail.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate y'all's, first of all, appreciate your service to your community. I know it's a labor of love, and I appreciate your service. Go back a couple of months, we got a call from Mayor Woodby, and she actually made a visit over to Nashville with my boss, Commissioner Mark Yuzel, and as she mentioned, we are the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development in Nashville, and each department and state government has a role in the hurricane recovery effort. So immediately, you saw TMA, you saw TDOT, you saw state agencies out here immediately. Well, our department is more in the background, we're, we're in the recovery operation. We're in the inspiring and helping businesses recover. Mayor Woodby came over to Nashville and said, "It's time to let people know that we're open for business in Carter County, that this lake is safe to, to return to. What can you do to help us out?" There was an event that was within two signatures of being signed to go down to Chattanooga and Hamilton County. It was very, very close to being done, and when the attention was brought on this opportunity, I called Glenn with Bassmaster, you'll hear from him in just a moment, and we diverted that event, and, and we have landed, it'll be here on Watauga Lake. Competition will be September 26th through 29th, and Glenn's going to give you the full detail on it, but from our, from our department, we're excited about the content that will be created. This is going to be filmed, every boat will have a professional camera crew in it. The camera crew, the production crew is the same crew that films and edits the Bassmaster Classic. The best of the best in film work is going to be happening. We're going to get the content, and they'll talk a little bit about what they're going to do with the content, but we're happy with the content we're going to get out of this and the eyes that will be placed on Carter County.
But I'll just say one thing that Dennis said earlier today, so Watauga Lake is going to make somebody's dream come true. One of these eight fishermen that's going to be on our lake, one of these collegiate fishermen is going to have their dream come true after fishing Watauga Lake, because the winner will go down to the Bassmaster in Knoxville in March. Prize is pretty huge on that. It's a tundra, new bass boat, so Watauga Lake's really getting ready to solidify our beauty and show it off a little bit, so we're excited about it.
Hey Glenn, can you hear us?
Sure, if you can hear me.
Check, check, absolutely, we hear you. I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Kell, he's the tournament director. He runs nationwide, the Bassmaster High School and College Series nationwide, and he'll be at the Bassmaster Classic, and he's the tournament director. Glenn, take it away and tell them a little bit about this event and what they can expect.
Thanks for, for having me and actually partnering with us. I couldn't think of anything else better. When we're looking for a head, Jim, one thing I can say about this is from my last call, this call was, is for some of you guys up there that's abandoned, not ever exposed on Watauga Lake for good fish, or the high priority of the town, because they're going to expose it, you guys will get some traffic, and that's what it's about, you know, things on the half of the mayor, Dennis. This is awesome, like the mayor was saying, this is going to be a quality improvement for me. These kids, these kids fish their whole, their whole youth into college to fish on the Bassmaster Classic stage, and we're going to, and as, and echo what the mayor said, is one individual, one of these eight All-Americans, even though it is college anglers, we got some seniors that are All-Americans, that's a very tight, very strenuous qualification, caliber, how we get to those All-Americans from, from GPAs, community service, the whole nine yards, and all entities this year for the first time ever will have me fishing the Bassmaster Classic, College Classic here on Watauga Lake. So eight anglers, it's going to be extended, probably about seven days will be in town. Feel free to come out and come check those weigh-ins out at 3 o'clock, it's going to be awesome. And as the mayor said, we're going to make us together a corporation of you folks in this room in Carter County, Tennessee, and Bassmaster, we're going to help platform a, a young man's dream come true, to be able to kickstart his career off in professional fishing, so pay Dennis to you guys, it's going to be awesome. Road to TV, we have our own Bassmaster Road to TV channel that we go to play, and there those folks can share that, what it looked like from a live standpoint on the day. We'll be bringing our film crews to the set out of Arkansas, JA Production, they'll be there in town as well for those five or six days, we'll have camera boat in the boat with each of these anglers, and then we'll have a drone boat going around and grabbing some footage as well. Definitely couldn't think of a better place. You know, you guys, this is going to come around to your wondering, and we're not a fix-all, and if we could do a little bit, make an improvement and help get you guys back on there, I couldn't think of a better place to do it, because I promise you, we was at Timms Ford Lake last year when you guys impacted two years. This is crazy how, how this sex up, this is not by accident, it's by a perp and a plan. But one year to, to when this is going to go down, we was over on the shore of the Timms Ford Lake in Tennessee having this thing event, and was getting all the outrage of what you guys were enduring there, so I can assure you that it's not a fix-all, but I tell you right now, it'll definitely help you guys out in Carter County, Tennessee, and the fine folks there. We're looking forward to it. I'm looking for some good food, some sweet tea. Hope y'all got some cornbread over there in Mouse, because I sure would love to eat some cornbread. These folks up in Alabama, they don't know what good cornbread is up here, but we appreciate you guys, seriously, we really did. Mayor for having us. It's going to be an awesome event. I can assure you that Bass is super excited about this event, coverage that you guys are going to get, and the exposure for Watauga Lake. And like I said, I mean, I know you guys can catch some good over there. These college kids are truly the best of the best in the business, so I put these guys in our, every Tuesday meeting, that these guys are truly the best of the best. These are the future pros, and as you can see, the stock of the magazines that we have on here, it don't take much to look at it, but we did have the classic bracket qualifier three years ago, just won the Bassmaster Classic, college angler, eastern public, also big Bass, big day, big dreams happening right here on the College Series, and you guys are going to be able to take a, and keep a fingerprint left after this thing just got to the vertigo here. I appreciate you guys, Carter County, Tennessee, for having us.
Thank you, Glenn. I'll turn it over to Alicia.
It's always great to come visit with you all. My name is Alicia Phelps, I'm with Northeast Tennessee Tourism, and we just wanted to express our enthusiastic support and excitement for the upcoming Bassmaster College Classic Bracket, which will be held on Watauga Lake. This event is not just a fishing tournament, it is a powerful economic engine and a marketing opportunity for this area for Carter County. We anticipate dozens of collegiate anglers and their support teams, families, fans, will all be visiting here. These visitors will book lodging, eat out at our local restaurants, purchase supplies from area businesses, and then according to Mr. Dennis's office, the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development, an average visitor, an outdoor rep will spend $328 a day, so imagine that hitting the Carter County area, that's a substantial direct economic impact. The presence of this tournament will fill overnight accommodations, restaurant tables, during what could be a slower time as we amp up for leaf season, and that's a welcome boost to our economy here. The immediate financial benefits of this tournament will place Watauga Lake and Carter County on the national spotlight. As a host site, our community will receive extensive media coverage, we are all working on that, including live broadcasts, social media features, articles, and our live. This exposure will showcase your area, your stunning beauty, world-class. This exposure will showcase your area, your stunning beauty, world-class fishing to a national audience of outdoor enthusiasts. This is an invaluable marketing tool that we almost just probably can't put a dollar sign on as it marks Carter County as our premier destination for sports tourism and outdoor recreation. And by embracing and supporting this event, you know, this confirms Carter County as a top-tier host for more sporting competitions in the area. And so we strongly just commend you in recognizing this tournament is valued at this tournament brings to your community, both in terms and economic growth and national recognition. So we cannot wait.
I didn't prepare a statement or anything, but we're very excited to host this event. You know, I think they've all said it very well, you know, it's great having the event. But then we're even more excited about the opportunity to kind of leverage this spotlight and take this attention that's going to be put on Watauga Lake and keep bringing people here to fish for your economy. So we're very excited to host.
Last thing I want to say is, as a commissioner, you're always concerned with the property tax rate. As you bring visitors in and inspire visitor spending, as Alicia was talking about, in 2023, the last data that we have, and we're getting ready next week to release the new data, this county had $56 million in visitor spending. Think about the sales tax and occupancy tax generated on 56 million. Every time a visitor spends a dollar in your town, it helps lower the tax burden on the citizens. Tourism is economic development. Tourism is economic development, one-on-one. It goes hand-in-hand. Every time you can get a visitor dollar in your town, it helps the community, helps education, it helps keep the wheel spinning. So I'll wrap it up with there, Mayor. Thank you for inviting us. Thank you for partnering with us. And we're happy to do this event. Glenn, thanks for joining us, friend.
Anybody, questions? Anybody have any questions, anything? I know this is exciting and we wanted to share the good news. And I want to say thank you to each one of you for always supporting these endeavors and looking forward to as we host this group coming into Carter County and showcase our beauty in Carter County, our special citizens, and really showcase who we are and how we live on each other and how we take care of each other. And it's even more memorable for me is that we were able to snag this up during the Hauling one year anniversary. And that was my request when I went down and met with Commissioner Yezel and their team. And Dennis was calling me within 30 minutes after the meeting and saying, "I'm meeting with my boss." So we, they, Carter County holds a special place and everyone's heart at the state level. So people really knew that they needed to help us and that we really wanted to shine a spotlight on Carter County. So we're excited about it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Woodby. That's very nice. Started fishing myself a little bit there, so. All right, we're ready for disaster update.
Good evening all. So the disaster update should be short. For our Category A, all paperwork has been submitted. We're waiting on reviews on that. Category B, which is emergency technical measures, all are, have been submitted. We're waiting on the temporary bridge that has been obligated. We are working with FEMA to start to draw on those funds. Our Category C, woodwork, we have 17 high lake projects that are still at the CRC and those projects are also in review for other mitigation, trying to get as much funds that we possibly can for that. NRCS, the contractors started on bank stabilization for Shell Creek, Keaton, Hampton, and Sugar Hollow. Thirty projects total have been submitted to FEMA for review. The bridge update for POGE-1, POGE-2, they are both about 80% through the engineering phase. We're still on target to have that completed by the end of August. For Long Hollow, that is also at the 80% through the engineering phase, again, with the completion of that phase by the end of August. That, it should take to get the contractor and everything in place, anywhere six to eight months to complete Long Hollow. POGE-1 and 2, we're looking at that two to three-year mark for these bridges. Our Category E, our site inspections have been completed and the invoices have been sent for review at CRC for scope and cost analysis. And for our parks, particularly Anderson Park, we have received confirmation from FEMA that it is part of a buyback program. So it's ineligible for any kind of FEMA reimbursement for Anderson Park. So we will need to possible grants, but because it's a buyback. For admin costs, which is our Category Z, we've got a total of 40 projects that are going to be submitted. We are working with FEMA because we are still accumulating those costs. So we'll make sure that all of those costs, we have our own payment. And that is what I have.
Any questions? We've been in here almost an hour, so we're going to continue. We need five, we need five minute break. Five minutes, seven o'clock, we're starting back.
Talking about this, no, I'm not going to be wrong.
Y'all get hungry. I've got a plate full of something. I've got milk, nuts, a fisherman right there.
Next, next off.
My dick really thought about that. But I did. I've got all sorts of chocolate right there.
Something in the water.
Everyone will take their seats.
Are you still about the education? I mean, terrifying. I was like, I'm falling.
Please take your seats so we can get started. Thank you. Okay, we're to have a comment. We are limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address. And I'd also like to remind everyone that we are adults and should behave accordingly. Should act as for the audience, the speaker, and the commission members. Someone that would like to speak.
She had just raised her hand.
Hello, I'm Teresa Anifer. I live at 150 Mayfield here in Elizabethan. And I am here about the Hampton quarry property. I have property in Hampton. My sister and I, we own from the Dennis Co Road all the way to Laurel Street, everything on the left side of the road. That will definitely affect our property values. It is also such a huge hazard for younger children and older adults. The silicon that is a byproduct from any kind of quarry is very hazardous. It can actually cause lung cancer. So I want the commissioners to really think about your people in Carter County. Because Hampton is a very small little place. And this is less than 4,030 from where we own property. It's a very congested little area. We can't afford to lose our adults there or our children coming in. That is a health hazard we don't need. We also, we want to promote tourism. Dennis Co is growing like mad. The park up there and the streams are beautiful. But we don't need something coming in right at the end that everybody's going to see. And even if you don't see the dust, the micro particles that you don't see, that is the hazardous things that you're going to be using or having to affect those people. So I would really like for the commissioners to look into this and stop this before it goes too far. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Hunter. And so last commission meeting, we bought a property on this site. We bought it very daily. We watched the last zoning and planning commission. And he felt it was personal. It is personal. He came to our house. We've owned that property since 98. And he just tried to buy the smaller portion that he has as a driveway. Also property down in his driveway. He came to us in February this year and said that he wanted, he had a survey and said that he wanted to buy 0.72 acres, which is about half, you know, about half an acre. And what he wanted to do was fix the driveway. There is water that comes down. But he wanted to fix that driveway and pave it for his daughter. Okay? So my husband said, "Well, we'll think about it." So a couple weeks later, he comes back again with another survey. And he says that he wants to buy 0.355 acres. And that he is going to put road at the sign of that. We get to the back of our property. But in every, in any of his conversations, say he was going to go up on the mountain and build a big gate. He did not say that. He did not say there was going to be blasting. He said nothing. The first we heard about the blasting is when the gentleman from DCE, okay, come on back, came by with a paper that said, "We want to take pictures of the outside and inside of our house, our property." Because they were going to blast over there on the mountain. And if we did not sign it or let them take pictures, then they would not be responsible for anything. In the same planning and zoning meeting, Bailey said, he said, "We have been blasting for a long time." And nobody knows it. We hear machinery run over there all the time. It's run over there for years. He probably worked on a road up to there. But, but we've known that something, something's going on over there. And the noise, the houses shake, the windows rattle. How would you like to have that beside of your property? I don't think you would. And that might happen to you, you know, if you allow this to go on. There is a pit up in that beautiful mountain. You talk about tourism. There's a hole up inside that mountain. You can see it when you round the curve there at McDonald's. Just look up. And it is a huge hole. And so, you know, what's people going to think about that big hole up there besides everything else? We pay for our property, we pay property taxes, and we expect, you know, something in return for that. We voted Bailey up for the commission, vice election in the sixth district. And you are putting on the planning and zoning commission. There was a reason that we voted him up. He is not for the people of that community, he is for himself. So that's, you know, he said it was personal, so that's, that's what I am telling you. It is, it is not only personal, but it takes away, maybe people's talking about. We have noise. It goes from six days a week, from seven in the morning to seven at night. And yes, so they can tell you that. But anyway, I appreciate your time for listening to me. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Shainsburg, 1002, Dr. Rick. As you probably know, over the last couple of weeks, there's been at least three occasions where EMS units are not immediately available for this task. Just the three that I know of. It's because all the units are tied up on current calls and they just aren't available regardless of whether it's an emergency call or whatever it may be. If you recall, we bought an auto pulse device for POGE Elmhills. Main reason was because of remoteness of POGE in Elmhills and because of the damaged roads up there. Even on a good day, sometimes the response from EMS up there. It's about an hour and a half, I've been told. It's maybe, if you're lucky, 30 minutes, but sometimes an hour and a half. I'm sure this, this, where we've been short here lately is only going to extend that time. So the automatic CPR device, some of you that were on the committees got to see that demonstrated here. It's a pretty amazing device. Very amazing device. Studies have shown manual CPR is ineffective pretty quickly when a human's doing it. It's hard to do the right depth of compressions and to continue those compressions. It's important that the compressions are continuous and constant. Because when the blood doesn't move, it tends to clot. And where the blood will clot is in the smallest blood vessels, which are in the brain primarily. And then, once you lose the brain, you lose the patient. This device is a machine. It just works. It just pumps the chest continuously. It's a life-saving device. It's a device that is needed for that area in particular because of the long response time for EMS. And we bought it in hopes that it could be used immediately. So what is CPR or the opulmonary resuscitation? Cardiac heart, pulmonary the lungs, resuscitation, bringing back from the dead. Because without a pulse, you're dead. You're completely dead. This machine brings back the pulse, keeps the pulse, as long as the battery's good. We bought three batteries, which means you probably got about an hour and a half to two hours of CPR. Which allows time for any EMS hope unit to hopefully get there. That is the whole point of it. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to utilize that device. The, the reason we were given by the state, because it's a class-two medical device. So we'll go over a couple of classes of medical devices. Class one, class two, and class three. Class one being the one that can almost do no harm or do minimal harm. It needs nothing like a band-aid. It is a medical device because the FDA has to clear it, make sure it's sterile, make sure it's packaged correctly, transmitted. Class two is this automatic CPR device that we're talking about. A life-saving device. It's a class-two medical device. Class three, this is the device that is the most dangerous. The most, more likely to do harm to patients. Class three is an AED. There's AEDs out here in the hall for anyone to use. There's AEDs being distributed to, I believe, even... Some of the constable units are gonna be getting AEDs. Yet it's a class-three device, according to the federal government and, well, according to our state government. It's more dangerous than the auto pulse. I'll give you a couple of examples of class-two. Now, they say class-two can, medical devices like we're talking about here, class-two in general, can only be used by EMT or paramedic. I'll give you a couple of examples of class-two. A power wheelchair, class-two medical device. Next time you see one, make sure there's an EMT or paramedic in it, because it's a class-two. Some home pregnancy tests, class-two. Does an EMT or paramedic have to administer that? Hope not. It doesn't show up at your house every time. And also a blood pressure cuff, it's a class-two medical device. I'm asking for your help. People, POGE and Elmhills need your help. This device is there. We need to do whatever we can do to get it utilized. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you ask people to silence your phones?
Yes, please turn your phones on silence. Is there anyone else? Okay. And speak into the microphone to your... You should say your name and your address.
Ladies and gentlemen, can everyone hear me?
No.
Okay, we'll go in a little bit. Little short here. All right, are we in business? Okay. My name is Celeste Lance, and I'm speaking as a private citizen from Elizabethan, Tennessee. And for reasons you'll see, I don't feel comfortable giving you my full address. I'm speaking in regard to the quarry project in Hampton. I won't speak to the legality of that project, though I will say I haven't seen enough evidence to convince me one way or the other. What I will speak to is my lived experience. My husband and I moved here because I am from the mountains of Appalachia. And we wanted to settle somewhere that shared our values. Instead, I found a place where fear and intimidation are used to keep citizens in line. In the past month, men identifying themselves as county commission members have been stalking and harassing those in this community, my neighbors and friends. They've confronted private citizens while they were grocery shopping with their children. They've sat for hours and days at a time outside private homes because residents dared to exercise their constitutional right to speak out against initiative that impede their ability to live a happy, healthy life. Whether by disrupting our water, our soil, and the very peace of our homes, and speaking out against what they believe to be improper behavior. Frankly, this is not the community that I believed I was joining. And this is not behavior most of us expect from our public officials. We believe, I believe we deserve a county government that leads with honesty, respect, and transparency, not intimidation. It's time we hold accountable those who fail to serve the people. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Brown. I live at 130 Disco Road, and I grew up, work, and live in Hampton, Tennessee. And this is what I have to share with you about what our community has been going through lately. From the Tennessee Ethics Commission, public officials should be independent and impartial and should avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest when performing their duties. From the Tennessee Department of Labor, conflict of interest. A circumstance in which a member's individual interest impairs or gives the appearance of impairing his or her ability to make unbiased decisions or provide unbiased public services. Also, any matter before the governing body in which a member has a financial or personal interest which is in conflict or gives the appearance of conflict with the discharge of the member's duties. It is unethical for a public official to be paid for a borrow pit that he helped install on his own property. The property in question belongs to a member of the Planning Commission. In our public records request, there are no meeting minutes of any kind about the project. Meaning all discussion of the project was done behind closed doors by a few individuals, hoping to make a buck at the expense of our entire community. It is unethical for one public official's decision to cause damage that will have to be repaired with public funds. It is a well-known fact that loaded truck traffic does extensive damage to roadways. Damage that will have to be repaired using public funds. And yet there is nothing in place to hold the property owner or project operator accountable for this damage. Meaning we, as taxpayers, will pay for that. From the Tennessee Ethics Commission, all citizens of the state of Tennessee have the right to expect that government will be administered and managed with the highest degree of professionalism, void of undue influence by any individual or group. It is thus the obligation of every public official to conduct himself or herself in a manner that will not violate the public trust. It is unethical for a life-altering project to be installed with zero input from or information to the community it will carry impact. The only form of notice our community received was a small publication in the Elizabethan Scar, describing Tennessee aggregates intent to mine on a property described as being located, quote, "on the Elizabethan, Tennessee, 7.5-minute USGS quadrangle of the Laurel Fork watershed." A notice that was published once, and that it would take a subject matter expert to understand. It is unethical for the decisions of a few public officials to directly impact the financial well-being of an entire community. In a community full of families and retirees, this borrow pit comes as a slap in the face. Regardless of who or how long they have been here, this project will devastate the property values of anyone who can see or hear the work. And given its location on the ridge, there are very few places in Hampton where the work cannot be seen or heard. It is unethical to use land designated for residential agriculture for blasting and heavy equipment with hundreds of residences within even a half-mile radius. The property on which the borrow pit is located is Zoned A-1A, a classification which the type of work being done does not even remotely fit into. And you can look at the county planning website and find that out for yourself. Now let me ask you all a hypothetical. If you wanted to get away from this work and leave Hampton, you would likely contact a Realtor and attempt to list your property. They would come out sometime Monday through Saturday during business hours. Furthermore, anyone interested in buying your property would likely come to look at the property sometime during business hours Monday through Saturday. Do you know what else operates Monday through Saturday? The same outfit that is raping the mountain, wreaking havoc on our finances, and ruining our community's peace of mind and quality of life. Now tell me, what Realtor, what family, what retiree, what individual in their right mind would want anything to do with the property where they wake up to the roaring, banging, and crashing of heavy equipment, tearing away at the side of the mountain eight to 10 hours a day, six days a week? Enclosing our community has been sold out. The intrinsic value of our quiet, pristine mountain valley was taken for granted. A public or a private company via direct cooperation with a couple of public officials has been allowed to profiteer off our small community in the wake of a natural disaster. This project in no way, shape, or form benefits our community. It instead only serves to line the pockets of those who forced it upon our community. I'm extremely disappointed and heartbroken that this borrow pit has been allowed to decrease our quality of life, damage our financial well-being, and overall degrade our community. And apologies for running over. Thank you for the time. Hello, my name is Taylor Brown. I was born in Carr County. I live in Hampton on Disco Road. And I am here to speak to you because I believe, I'm gonna speak to you on why I believe, that it is the correct moral choice for you to remove from the Planning Committee, Committee Member Gary Bailey for his unethical behavior in regards to the Hampton borrow pit. Before I begin in full, I would like to say that I do not have any issues with this body, the committee, or the Planning Committee as a whole. I really, I only have concerns of a few individuals have taken, seemingly without knowledge of the rest of this body. My brother spoke before me, and I know that many others in our county feel the same. Just in case you are unaware, there is a petition currently out that... A petition out to stop the mine and investigate the members involved in the creation of this mine. This petition already has more than 1,000 signatures. So if I'm not mistaken, you, our county commissioners, found out about this borrow pit project at the same time as the public, when heavy machines began driving up and down the mountain, and when you began receiving calls from your constituents asking what was going on. This is the heart of this unethical nightmare. This... That a project was begun... Excuse me. That a project is being undertaken with public funds on the land of a public official that had no public comments and no input from the public, the people living where the project would be happening, unethical. The residents in Hampton and the county in general had this sprung on us out of nowhere. Now, six days out of the week, heavy machines, dump trucks roll up and down the street, loud machinery is run up on the hillside, we're all to hear and see. It is shocking to think that a project which will directly harm all of the residents in Hampton could be undertaken without anyone in the public or the county government's knowledge beforehand. It is obvious to me that public officials who made this happen did it with, did it knowing that if they had brought this before the public, it would have been stopped. Instead, they kept it secret even to county officials who live in Hampton, who now have to suffer with constant heavy machine noise, damage to our roads, damage to our water infrastructure, and damage to our homes. This behavior is unethical and immoral. For one county official to make money while the rest of their neighbors suffer harm to their homes and health is unacceptable. Today, you have been afforded a unique opportunity to reject the corruption and take the stand that our county officials are not here to serve themselves, but to serve their constituents. So I ask you to please remove Planning Committee Member Gary Bailey for his unethical behavior. To please choose your constituents, choose what is right, and choose people over profits. Thank you.
Good evening. First, as a veteran, I'd like to thank you for the pledge and prayer to start this meeting. As a former educator, thank you for the focus on that success of the community. My name's Matt Delozer, 332 Mountain View Drive. My father-in-law's kid, Rainbolt, is here tonight, living a house that he owns. Out there on top of Mountain View Drive. I wrote my statement tonight because I can be a little long-winded, especially when I get a little emotional. So if you'll indulge me, I'll read it, and I'm sure I'll be done. What we keep hearing from everyone is that it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate you have this borrow pit destroying your peaceful mountainside and home. It's unfortunate that the property values are going to decrease probably significantly. It's unfortunate that, excuse me, we heard from a deputy, just doing his job, but saying unfortunately, there's nothing we can do to remove a person sitting outside your house in the road. It doesn't matter that your wife's in the shower and that you're leaving for work. And it's making everyone uneasy, including the neighbors and some elderly residents who have no idea why a truck's sitting outside their home. What's unfortunate is that I learned the man was an elected representative who apparently doesn't care that people don't want people sitting outside their home and refusing to identify yourself. Further, excuse me. It's unfortunate that you didn't respect me enough to look at me. When I asked you who you were and why you were there, instead you thought it was funny. Funny enough to say all I'm doing is sitting here scrolling through Facebook. Sir, all I asked for was enough respect to be acknowledged, but unfortunately, I didn't receive that, unfortunately. You apparently talked to enough people to explain that you're trying to hear or hear or record noise levels from the work ongoing literally right above our home. What I find odd is that you sit there for hours during times when there's literally no work going on. But ironically, by some cosmic coincidence, 15 minutes after you leave, the boys and the toys go to work. It's amazing how close you come every time, to almost hearing it. I'm being a little silly, of course, but I guess that's unfortunate. So unfortunate because after witnessing the last meeting, I decided to learn more, and I've heard the same things tonight. The community voted someone off the commission, but yet they still sit in the seat to govern. It's the fourth branch of government at work. For the record, my wife, nor me, have ever met Mr. Bailey. But on television, as stated earlier tonight, he said it was personal. I don't know Mr. Bailey. Know anything about him. It's not a personal thing at all for me. To me, it's about the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. The speed limit signed is 55 miles an hour, and we'd write a ticket for someone at 56 or 70 to control that speed for public safety. The spirit of the law is public safety. This is to say somebody followed the letter of the law because they found ways around certain things. certain things. It's not to say that somebody had the public in mind. It isn't about just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law, because the spirit of the law protects citizens. Well, one of you sat outside my house, sat outside veterans' houses, sat outside houses of people who were afraid, sat outside the houses of people who have little children who they didn't let out to play because they didn't know who was in the truck. It's not an overstatement. Another one of yous, or one of your appointees, Mr. Bailey, said on television in the meeting the day after the last commission meeting, that it's really our fault. He said it's their fault for not knowing. Does that sound like representation to you? It's not representation by any means. It's more closely akin to stalking, to harassment, to retaliation, and more importantly, to breach the oath that you perform to work or fulfill with fidelity. The state statute says fidelity. Fidelity means faithful or loyal. It doesn't mean to each other, it doesn't mean to your little alliances, it means to us.
Right.
To us. Unfortunately, you haven't done so.
Please don't continue on your current path. It's a disgrace to the people that voted for you and to all those you represent, whether you respect them or not.
Good evening. My name for a moment is Sanchez Venus. I live at 871 Sycamore Shoals Drive, and I'm a central community. I'm up here because in 1980, I was brought to Carter County, and I in fact opened the Chamber of Commerce in its new building up on the bypass. At the time, the motto for this county was naturally nice. That was the goal and the ideals that were being set forth at the time. And I'll tell you a little something. I was here as an industrial director, and some of the people who were powers that be reminded me that Carter County doesn't have a whole lot of industrial land for development. And it's true. We probably don't have the money to put the big subsidies up to all industry. What we do have is God-given, beautiful, natural resources that are here, and we've all enjoyed. I've never left this place because it's the most scenic place I've ever been to. I'm asking you, not in the context of this quarry, but I'm asking you in the context of the long-term future of this county, that you start looking at visual blight. I'm not talking about getting into people's personal rights and their property, but some areas of the county, you've got junk piled up at the sides of the road, it's visual blight. It needs to be dealt with. This quarry up here, my understanding is that there should be a road preparation fund set up and a reclamation fund for the vegetation up there. If it doesn't get stopped, I don't know, I haven't heard anybody say that there was fund set aside for road restoration or vegetation when it's all over. If you were in the people's shoes up there at 7 o'clock on Saturday morning, would you like to hear that equipment starting up? You know, why couldn't they have at least vetted it and maybe set at 10 or 11 o'clock start-up time on Saturdays if they were going to operate? So I'm just asking you in the future to not only think about that mine problem up there, but start looking around this county and work toward cleaning up the visual blights so that when people come to Carter County, they see entrance ways that are not crowded with junk. They see people taking pride in the community. They see groups like the group that's out in Watauga that picks up the trash once or twice a month and gets off the side of the road. We need to get back to naturally nice, and I'm asking you as a commission to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No one else?
Okay, we'll include comments. And David Rose. I'm just trying to make it.
I'm with a company called VCE, Vibration Control Engineering, and I've been requested to speak here regarding blasting. And that's basically what I'm going to be talking about is blasting. So VCE is formed in 1975. Our technical division specializes in pre-blast inspections. We do seismic monitoring, blast vibration consulting, technical services such as blast causation should there be blast damages. Sorry, I gotta head to my cell. We have offices from Florida, we have a corporate office in Nashville, Tennessee, we have one in Johnson City, Wally, North Carolina, and Charlotte, North Carolina. We have worked on thousands of projects similar to this across the nation. I was hired by Baker Construction Services to do pre-blast surveys and seismic monitoring on this project. I've worked with Baker for some 18 or 19 years personally. Our company has a longstanding relationship with them prior to. Our company's again been in business for 50 years. They are a family-owned business, over 39 years' experience, serves Tennessee, Virginia, West Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky. Takes pride in workmanship, their equipment, their employees, and places importance on job site safety. Have a solid reputation for experience and professionalism. Okay, if it can't be grown, it's got to be mined. Blasting is an integral part of the whole country's economic engine and contributing to our standard of living. In a few words, blasting is precision used to confine explosives detonating ground, fracture rock, intended to be excavated for use in highway construction, on-site development, and mining quarry operations. Modern blasting methodology provides a safe, reliable, and accurate approach to provide materials that builds our modern lifestyles, homes, offices, energy needs, agricultural, agricultural elements, and even new highways and airports are examples of benefits while the blast, that the blasting industry provides. While blasting provides numerous benefits, we realize that concerns still arise from people that live and work near blast sites. These concerns are also our concerns. We did a project here a few years ago. This is in Nashville at the governor's residence. And I'm just bringing this up to show that, you know, that was a high-profile job. Blasting being done correctly, you can blast very close to someone's house. In this slide here, trial blasting is a process where you begin to do blasting and you test what the vibration and the characteristics of the site are in initial blast. And that's what we did while we were constructing or being involved in the construction of the governor's, what was called the underground conservatory, which was being built on the front lawn of that residence. The first blasts were located further from the executive residence, and that locations were significant distances from neighbor's residence. You can see a neighbor's residence across the street. This was planned, so many adjustments to blasting to be made before the next slot, which is this. That's the front of the home. There was a tunnel built underneath that home, underneath that residence. Again, that is the governor's residence outside of Nashville. Talk a little bit about schedule. Blasting typically will be conducted between hours of 8:00, 4:00 PM on Monday through Friday. Blasting will not be conducted on weekends or major holidays. Blasting is not allowed at night. Blasting will be not conducted on high-wind advisory days. Blasting is very regulated here in the state of Tennessee. It's much more regulated than it is a lot of our border states. Our blasting limits are lower than a lot of states that border us. On-site warnings, you know, before blasting's prepared to be detonated, on-site personnel will be notified by an audible warning. Warnings that tend to make sure that unauthorized personnel are out of the containment area. Warning signals are not to be sounded until all entrance blasting area have been restricted for use by blasting personnel. There'll be a five-minute warning consisting of three long signals. This is given after the blaster in charge has made sure that personnel are at a safe distance. There's a one-minute warning consists of, consists of three short signals. This is given after the blaster in charge has made sure that, again, all personnel are, again, at a safe distance. Then once the blast is initiated, they come back in, make sure that all the ordinance has shot from one end to the other, if you will, then they sound and all clear. I'll talk a little bit here about energy theory and what happens here when you're breaking a rock. They'll drill a series of bore holes. It's not like what's a C on TV with something being imploded, stuff flying everywhere. If that's the result, then it's, then that's about a day. So there's two categories. There's the energy theory and the wave theory. So we'll talk about the energy theory. 95% to 96% of the energy used to go in a blast for the intended or fraction of the rock is required when it's excavated. So again, they'll drill a hole, let the ordinance in it, they'll put a stemming agent around it, they'll initiate the blast, it detonates. Blasting is like throwing a rock into a pond. It's a spherical release of energy where the rock goes in the water, that's where all that energy is released, and over time and distance it dissipates. For every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. Correct? So the other 5% remaining is the air blast, if you will, concussion, the noise from blasting. Trying to expedite this just a little bit. That particle movement, again, when we start talking about the energy part of it, is in what's called inches per second or peak particle velocity. That's what the governing bodies look for, is what is the peak particle velocity. And again, that limit, I'll go and show that here in a few minutes, is lower here than you can see than it is a lot of our border states. Again, a blast detonation creates the air movement that I was talking about. So this movement causes low-frequency air movement up and down the surface of the site. These waves move in an arching manner in all directions. So I mean, if it's in a, you know, kind of like a valley, you know, it's going to go down the bottom and go right back up. If it's a cold day or a damp day, rainy day, it's going to take longer for that to dissipate. If it's a warmer day, no clouds in the sky, that sound's going to go by faster. Air movement is also measured in PSI or, which is, or you can do it in a, in a linear form too. I won't really talk about that. So from perspective, the ground vibration displacement is less than the thickness of Just another shot of a war hole, and again, what I was talking about, you know, where this energy is transmitted in a 360 degree. Moving on here, this is the site. Some of you folks have already seen this. We have, when we were first charged to do surveys here, I think we started these on the 8th day of July. We had made contact with 23 residents that's within the scope that we have. We have three stations, seismographs there on site. Those from left to right are 1 and 338 Mountain View Drive, one in the middle's at 103 Rota Dendron Drive, and the last one's at 150 Cherry Elaine. Show you another slide here right quick. This is a project that our group in Nashville is working on. It's going to give you a flavor here. Blasting's done with a lot of businesses and buildings and homes and whatever within a certain area. So inside this kind of area here, this is where the blast is going to be conducted, and we've got some seismographs strategically located there. Everyone, where you see S1, S2, so on.
Excuse me, we don't live in Nashville. Excuse me, ma'am. He's doing his presentation.
Okay, so in order to conform to the law, again, blasting in Tennessee laws were much lower than, again, our border states. So I specifically have worked and do work in Tennessee, Kentucky, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, and Louisiana. So in order for, to conform to the law, blasting must comply with following three-vibration criteria in addition to air blast criteria. So this particular project, all these homes are well beyond 1,000 foot from where blasting is taken place. So zero, or excuse me, 301 to 5,000, which you can see in the peak particle velocity limits. 1.0 inches per second is the maximum vibration that can be allowed. Got another chart I want to show you. The chart up on the top, that's zero to 300 feet, is it really applicable to anything that's going on? So this is what a lot of people call a Z curve. So to be compliant, whenever a seismograph prints out, it'll have dots either above that line or below that line. So anything below that line is going to be a legal shot. This again, I want to show this when I talk about vibration decay. So you can see, and this is just a general thing here, so two inches per second, which is the maximum legal limit in Tennessee at zero to 300 foot, 500 pounds for delay, you can see over time at 6,000 feet, that vibration or that peak particle velocity is basically nothing. Same thing when you're at 2,000 feet. It's less than, 1.0 is the criteria at 301 to 5,000 feet. So it's going to be less than 0.5 inches per second. If I've done it correctly. So this is all the blasting that's been done on this project. So this is all the blasting that's been done on this project. This is the only true shot we have captured with three seismographs we have set out. So I know that slide's just a little fuzzy, so maybe let me just a second. Because there is a point to be made here. Last reading on this particular shot was 0.104 inches per second with a maximum dB, decibel, 112. So again, theoretically, to be compliant with Tennessee law, you could shoot up to 1.0 inches per second. So it's basically comparing a dime to a dollar, if you think about it in that way. May not be the best way to describe it, but you can see where I'm going with that. So talked a little bit about this. I want to go back to, I've already talked about 1.25 inches per second. This is just, I want to show some examples of what it's going to take to cause damage to somebody's house. At 5.4 inches per second, this is minor damage to an average home that's subjected to quarry blasting. Can happen, 5.4. Again, I've been doing this some 18-plus years and I've never witnessed a shot and been on hundreds of shots, been cleaning 5.4. Nine point inches per second, you know, minor damage from quarry blasting, structural damage to some houses. It depends on the vibration source. And there were some factors here that come into play, and God forbid a 20 inch per second.
Mr. Rose, I'm going to ask you to round this up.
Okay.
About 15 to 20 minutes and we have reached that.
Okay. All right. I'll show a couple more slides here. This is a human response chart. What's conceived in Tarlo World, you can see that comes in, comes about 0.6, people feel like that they're being violated. 0.2 is unpleasant. And we're, the only shot we've captured is 0.10. And anything really blown, below 0.2 for blow is, is okay. As far as human protection's concerned. I'll leave you a couple of things here. And I would like to read one last thing here, if I could. This is a noise comparison level. So a soft 30-foot away is 30 decibel. Normal conversations, 50 decibel. Heavy traffic, 90 decibel. Jet plane taking off, 105. Automobile horn, 110 decibel. And a jet plane taking off, 140. And that gets up there to the top of what the maximum level is. One last thing here. And I appreciate everyone's attention and. So I've lived in the process of my entire life. I was born and raised in Bristol, live in Piney Flat now. I went to East Tennessee State University, graduated several years ago, belong to the ISCE International Society of Electrical Engineers, also a member of Tennessee Road Builder Association. Our company did an engineering study of 2,550 blast claims from 1999 to 2008. These were in Kentucky, Tennessee, Virginia, Nevada, California, Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Alabama, Arizona, Utah, that were investigated over the last decade. These investigations determined that ground vibrations claims are less than 1.3% of the time. The obvious one that's going to cause damage is some type of fly rock being thrown from the side. You can have three causes of damage. Vibration, the overpressure, we talked about here just a little bit ago, and/or fly rock. And that's part of the root of any damage is going to be. And the probability of throwing something from that side down the hill is probably very miniscule. I'll look this slide up here too. You can see at two inches per second, we've set this up many times where we'll have seismograph set up and fly wall and driving a nail or slamming a door, you'll be over two inches a second, just, you know, by doing those type of actions. And one last thing. Energy damage occurred. Structures where fly rock, again, was 0.27% of the time resulted in air concussion, 1.82% of the time, and they resulted from the ground vibration, 1.29% of the time. That's where we came up with the three points. Let's retire. I'm going to gain voice.
You live in Hampton, no home, home, stop.
I told you where I live.
I would like to see what your recording was on your blast this morning. The lead to being, I live straight line, around half a mile from the site. I'm on the other side of the road. Outside, I usually can hear stuff. No big deal. I'm right on the highway, usually drowns out everything. This morning is the first time that I have heard and felt a blast at my location. So I would be interested to know what those numbers look like.
Okay. So again, we've, and I checked it before I got up here to talk. I just want to make sure I was right in what I was saying. The only recorded vibration reading that we've had, and I put that up on the screen here just a few minutes ago, is at 103 moving in. That was on 7/28 morning afternoon. It's the only recording that we have on those seismographs. And these seismographs are under lock and key. We maintain third-party integrity. No one with a blast company, contractor, nobody else has access to these machines except our personnel.
Then I apologize, I must have been dreaming this morning, so thank you.
Mr. Rose, if, if this is not a concern, why did the people in the area, why were they asked to have their home inspected and have?
A blast survey is a very common thing that's offered in Tennessee. It's actually law within a certain geographical area. Contractor that we work for, again, goes beyond call of duty to go out, further out to offer these to the homeowners. So again, what we do, we document condition of the home as of that day. All of our information is archived in our corporate office for statute of limitations, which is 10 years here in Tennessee. We look for things such as cracks in foundations, walkways, driveways. What it does, it sets a benchmark of what the condition is to those homes or businesses as of that day. Protects the homeowner, should the contractor cause damage to the home. Conversely, it's the world which we live in, it protects the contractor as well. There's a third party to protect the homeowner's rights and the contractor's rights.
I'm sorry for Commissioner's questions.
Thank you for that information. So first, I have two, a couple of questions. One is, who asked for, who invited you to speak tonight on this? I was just curious because I know we added it to the agenda. Excuse me? Okay. Second, I know we've heard a lot about the ground and so forth, so I know Bakers, V.C. and the property owner, of course, everyone's making money there, but we understand that the issue here is the community and the homes. And I know we've seen pictures that you showed affixing foundations, but we know this blasting is not going on to fix a foundation. It's, it's uprooting the earth and affecting. Two of my questions is a lot with spring water because the picture of downtown Nashville, they don't have, have spring water there. I'm sure they have, you know, city water. So my issue would be, what about spring water? Can you, if you have anything you would like to share? And, and after the creeks flood that we have had through, there's a lot of roots, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of issues that are out there that just the least bit of anything can truly change our grounds because not only are our creeks aren't back yet, but neither, if you go walking up in the woods, you see a lot of issues with downed trees and even root exists. So how can you explain these things?
We've done projects where streams have been in question. Again, these blasting limits are set because of this. We've done work, landfills, or we had to monitor streams and water flows and that type of stuff. You know, if, if you're a homeowner and you have a concern about that, you know, I would suggest that, you know, typically our homes are one of the largest of businesses we ever make in our life. So you want to do your due diligence, protect your property. So, you know, Tennessee, Tennessee, all they request is through blast surveys and seismic monitoring. Seismic monitoring's not even really required in, in certain things, but again, most contractors do that either they monitor themselves or they have a third party such as us do that form. But, you know, I would suggest that you do, you know, your own water testing flows and those type of things. But there's no prevailing law in Tennessee to allow for that.
I mean.
Tennessee law.
You have a question?
I'm just waiting to make sure Commissioner Oden was.
Yeah, I am. Sorry, I thought she said. Yeah, I am.
Talking about the beginning of this project, what is the target date to end this project?
I don't know.
Are we talking two or three years? Should we talk in a year, six months?
I don't know. That, that information's not been given to me. Again, we, we have been asked, we have been asked to come out and do seismic monitoring through blast surveys, and that's what we've done. I go on a lot of projects and again, whenever a lot of these states I travel in, I don't always know the duration of a project. I'll walk into somebody's home and they'll say, how long's the project? What are they doing over there? When's it going to start? When's it going to end? I don't know. Because some contractors we deal with, they'll send us a grocery list, if you will, of homes or businesses to be surveyed, and that's all the information we get. And we go do what we're charged to do. Some other projects, there is more information that's related to us. And if I have good information, I'm more reliable, but if I don't know what the project details are.
I was just kind of curious because you've been with the company many years. Typically, you've been to several different states, done this type of project before. What, how, what is the duration have you seen on an average? Can you answer that question?
Not really. I mean, you know, a lot, a lot of quarries are many, many, many years. It's not a quarry. It's not a quarry, but I mean, you know, you think about road projects, you know, those could be one, two, three years, depending on the land, what the project details are, total scope of work is, whether there's various bridges or whatever needs to be built. So it just varies from project to project.
I've got one other question. Does this, during a project for the person that owns the land, the property, is this a lucrative business for them?
Sorry?
As far as when you talk about lucrative money?
For who?
For the landowner.
That part I couldn't answer. We're a business to do what I said just a few moments ago. And other individuals, I don't know. Services don't come cheap. We, we bill our clients. Any money's and how that works out beyond that, I, I have no answer for that.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
What is the typical size charge in a bore hole? How deep are the boards going at this particular site?
Again, that's, that's understood. That's beyond our scope because it depends on where they're drilling at any given time, you know, what they're trying to do. We, we don't get involved in those type of things. Again, our scope of work is setting up seismograph monitoring activities. And then should there be claims on the back end? You know, we have geologists, professional engineers at work, work company, actually under the company's professional engineer has several papers published in, in several, well, one of them in ISCE I was referring to. Actually, Wade Hutchinson sat on the board of, in Tennessee to develop law, developed law for blasting. The seismograph that the state fire marshal's office used, we were instrumental in working in developing that seismograph. Particular seismograph that we're working with on this project is a very delicate piece of equipment. Just to kind of give you a flavor, I mean, each one of these machines are probably in the neighborhood of about $6,000 sitting up on top of that here.
One other question, Carol, I'm sorry. So what was the IPS rating? Is that, you're referring, when you're saying referring to IPS ratings? Are you referring to what the rating was on the seismograph or?
Inches per second.
Right.
Inches per second. That's the reading that was on the seismograph and on the waveform that I showed.
Okay. So the largest, you said, a few minutes ago, Mr. Commissioner Smith was asking, what was the largest one that had shown and what was that one?
0.104, 108, 104, something like that. Let me.
It's at those ranges which are?
0.104.
Those ranges, that's at the seismograph and how many feet are between each of the seismograph and, let's say, the closest possible blast that could have generated that?
I know I was on the site this past Friday and we did some calculations up there and the blasting was behind us and we were about 1,200 foot and I don't know really how much further up the hill they were, so, you know, 1,500 foot probably, but there was equipment running up there, so I wasn't able to get my vehicle up on top of it. Technician that I have working on this project, Bob, he has 40 plus, he's not worked with me that long, but he's worked with me for a couple of years, but he has four or five years of working in the gas and oil industry in a similar position.
Mr. Whaley? Yes. You talked about and you showed where you were working in Nashville at the governor's residence, and I know we're not national, but I just need this information. How far was the residence that was across the street from the governor's residence where you were blasting?
Yeah, no, that one I can't answer. I'm sorry. I can't answer that question.
Do you know, is the blasting that was done at the governor's residence, is it the same as what you're using at the quarry in Hampton?
Same type of.
Is it the same?
Same type of procedure. It might be different depths and those type of things, but as far as procedurally, it's the same type of blast.
And how close is this quarry, or sorry, the borrow pit, to the closest hub?
Again, that's kind of a moving target like I was saying here a few moments ago. So it could be anywhere from 1,000 plus feet to, if they got on the backside of the site, you know, it could be 1,500 or.
So if you're using a stronger blast on the borrow pit, it's going to be felt more?
No. See, they can only look so much ordinance in a bore hole based on distance to a structure. And what's, what, that's what state Tennessee calls a habit structure. Or in cases of, I had that graph up there just a few minutes ago, formulation that they have to utilize in order to determine the maximum weight of explosives that they can put in a bore hole based on that distance. I mean, it's, it's just not, people up there nearly, I mean, a hole and, and thinking, hey, hopefully this is going to work out great. It's, it's not like that. Blasting here in Tennessee, again, these, it's a, it's a, in order to get a blasting license, there's a battery, a test that has to be taken and it's not very simplistic. I mean, it takes a lot of study time in order for these guys to get, or women, to get a blasting license. Plus they have to go over a couple of years and get continuing education. Plus they have to go over a couple of years and get continuing education. One of our border states here, and I won't name who it is, but if you have a hazmat certificate, you're legal to do blasting in that state. So basically, if you think about it, that's kind of scary right there.
What is the longest distance from the closest residence to where they have blasted so far? What is that distance?
Again, we talked about that here just a few minutes ago. I wasn't able to get it wrong on top of the hill, but based on using Google Earth and those type of things, we estimated about 1,500 something. You know, we do utilize GPS, but that particular day I wasn't able to get it wrong, so.
Who has the closest houses?
Well, again, that's why we have those three seismic graphs. Those are the three closest to the site overall.
All right, Mr. Smith, one more.
Yes, I just wanted to add to my previous question. Would it be possible for me to get or to see the readout from the blast this morning? Simply, I'm serious, I'm not doing it for any, for any standard of anything of that nature. I just know that was the only one I've heard inside my house. And the atmospheric conditions could have been different, it may have been a more solid rock. So I really want to educate myself on that side of it.
Again, we have a trigger level, it's that seismic graph, and if it doesn't trip the trigger on the seismic graph, then there's no reading. It would be less than .10 inches per second or .05 inches per second, you know, where the trigger level is on the machine.
And that's actual vibration of the ground, correct?
Thank you, pardon.
That's the actual vibration of the ground?
No, no. That's how that energy's transmitted on top of the ground.
Including the air itself. It's a combination.
Air's a different thing, but vibration and, like I said, air, air blast and vibration are two different things.
Thank you. Mr. Cowan, did you have a question?
Yes. Regarding the blasting of these quarries, are they required, would this be an ordinance or would it be a state statute that each quarry would record each blast that they did? Would it be documented?
We do a lot of quarry monitoring, so I would think, I don't know if there's state statute that they have to, but I would think so. I mean, they, they would be foolish not to.
That's my main question, and this is my new question pertaining to traffic noise, holidays and so on, blasting times or operation times for quarry. I believe you said that normal operating was equal four?
Blasting.
Blasting, now is that an ordinance or is that a state statute?
No, that's just typically what the contractor's going to use.
So that's just their will, whatever they want to, it has to be implemented on the.
Well, you can't blast it not, or sure.
Why couldn't you?
It's a lot.
Well, why wouldn't that, why wouldn't there be a statute that can give a time when they could blast?
That, I don't know answer to that question. But typically, but typically it's going to be a day or two.
So you wouldn't find any of this stuff in a TCA?
I'm sorry?
You would not find any information on, you know, based on what they're taking in the TCA that would give the guarantees as far as blasting or noise level?
I'm not familiar with that regulating body. I think so.
Okay. We're going to consider number 18.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
If there's discussion.
Any commissioners who can discuss and speak, and then we will let the planning commissioners, the families, first speak for the commissioners that would like to speak, remember, to the point.
I have been pressed.
Three.
First, go ahead, Tom. Yeah, that's okay then. Go ahead. I might be a wobbler.
That's all right.
I'm learning.
Set you off to.
Yes, I'm aware of that too. First of all, thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
And I'm glad that we spent that much time on this and that will actually bring me to my first question, or my first comment, you may say. If indeed it is such a non-big deal or not an issue or not a problem, as I believe you explained it perfectly, it's really not, that would bring up the question, then why lie about it to begin with?
Please, please let him speak. Please let Commissioner Smith speak.
Thank you. I see some reactions on the back row, on the back row, so I'll fill that in. When I first asked about this in March, I was told there will not be any blasting. Standing right there beside my desk, there will be any blasting in March. When this started again in July, first thing I did was call Commissioner Burrow and said, what the heck's going on? Again, he got the same information. There's not going to be any blasting, don't worry about that, there's not going to be any blasting. Why, lie about such a basic issue if it's not a big deal? Somebody please tell me. Nobody have an answer for that? Because I would like to hear it. That's just the start. Now, attention on this some last month, we, we try to be transparent. We say we're trying to be transparent. We want to be transparent. Would anyone disagree with that statement in this floor? Would anybody disagree that we want to be transparent? None, correct? Have any of you tried to get anything or said anything that you just didn't get out to the ground and it'd be on Facebook where you got home? I just went through that. Well, somebody explain to me how we went, now even more months of March, April, May, June, we went five months with this on the books ready to go without a word. Without a word to the planning commissioners, without a word to the commissioners of the sixth district, nothing. Do you know how much effort that took to get to do that? Just imagine how much effort they had to put out to keep that quiet for five months Trust had been touched on before. I'm going to tell you, we're hurting in that area right now. Not just from this, but we're hurting in other areas as well. And I mentioned it last month again, we had the opportunity to do the right thing. We asked that you consider someone else for this position when it first came up. And here we are. Right here's the people again, they're asking again, help us out. We told you once, no, will you listen a second time? No. Just listen, that's all I'm asking. If you had a business, would you not want to operate on the highest standard possible in order to be successful? Anybody, I'll take a head shake, anything, just would you want to do the best you could to succeed and go to the next step? Why is it in government that bare necessity is enough? Why is the bare minimum of requirements enough? Why don't we go and try to take that another step, to try to do better, to try to do more for our constituents? Why are we so happy with the bare minimum? Well, we are. We're patting ourselves on the back. Well, all this was legal and all, yep, you're right, I said that last month, it was legal. It was unethical as could possibly be the way it was handled, but it was 100% legal. Now, what's the difference between ethical and legal? Why do you have two different things there? Why don't you say legal and be done with it? Why do we have a code for ethicals? Do you want to give a guess? You could be 100% legal and still be 100% unethical. You can also be 100% illegal and 100% ethical. Those two are separated for a reason. They're both supposed to be at the same high standard. The legal and the ethical. Without one, it don't work. And that's what happened here. We had a miscommunication, we had no communication, we had a broken chain of what should have happened versus what did happen or what legally happened. No consideration was given to these people, no consideration was given to the commissioners of the sixth district, no consideration was given to the planning commissioners themselves, and yes, I got the same FOIA request, and guess what? Their gentleman was right, there was no meetings whatsoever about this, and you know why? I'll tell you why. Because they said, well, that wasn't required, because they did the bare minimum. That's what they did, they did the bare minimum. If nothing else tonight, I want to say on record, planning commission, do your job. Get up, create the rules, create the situations where this cannot happen to another community. I challenge you now. One gentleman said every action has an equal and opposite reaction. Guess what the reaction was? Hiding things from the community, guess what the reaction was? They're sitting right over here. That's your equal and opposite reaction. The part that we all need to take away from this is, guess what? If we had taken one more step, this much, if we had took 30 minutes out of a day to inform these folks, to inform us so we could inform the folks, inform the planning commission, how long would that took? We could have done it all within 15 minutes, everybody there. But, and we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, so we'd already be past that. But instead, here we are, still having the same conversations because nothing was done, because everything was done to the bare minimum. Folks, we've got to do better. These folks deserve better than the bare minimum. I rest.
I don't know how many of y'all know about explosives or anything about it. I have an extensive background with explosives in the military. I know the difference between a low war shot and a high war shot. I've shot shots in the military from one pound to 20 tons. These explosions up there are what I consider low war. They're usually a binary explosive, they don't use dynamite. What that means is they burn at a slower rate to create more pressure. It goes and it cracks the rock, it doesn't throw the rock. It doesn't create a shockwave in the ground large enough for you to feel a thousand feet away. I've been up there when there's been three shots made. I have tried to complete two of them on cell phone. I can understand it and I can hear it. I have yet to feel one. When the shot goes off, all you hear is a, that's it. I've been 700 feet from the shot. The ground doesn't shake. If it shakes, it's so small, you can't feel it. Because it's not doing that shockwave blast like a stick of dynamite does. It does an expansion, it's low war. As far as a shockwave above the ground, I've felt one, I didn't really feel it, I heard it because I happened to be standing inside a tin building and I heard the tin rap. It's the only reason I heard it. I haven't felt one yet. I've been there for three, been 700 feet from it. If you don't feel it at 700 feet, it's not likely you're going to feel it or hear it past that. It's one of those things that, I was told the other day that there was an explosion up there at 3:30 in the morning. I know better. I've been up there from 6 o'clock in the morning on some days for a couple hours. I hear more road noise than anything coming off that mine until after 7:30 or 8 o'clock. Whatever you want to call it, I call it a mine because it digging rock. It's not what it's labeled as, which I don't know the particulars of it, but I've been on site, I've sat down on Mountain View, I have sat down in Scope, I've sat at Brown's, I've sat down by the elementary school, I've sat down by the church on 321. I don't hear that noise up there. I can hear it slightly when I'm sitting at Brown's and there's no traffic on the road. I hear more road noise sitting up on that mine than I hear mine, mine, noise coming off until they start loading a truck or digging rock. I'm sorry, folks, I'm, I'm just reporting what I'm seeing and hearing. I've been up there as early as 6 o'clock in the morning and I've been up there as late as 5, 5:15 in the afternoon. I've been there all hours between. Yes, I'm not going to hear it all, I understand it. Early morning hours is going to be louder because it's echoing in the morning, the clouds, the sun, whatever. It's always echoing in the morning, doesn't always echo during the day. That's just my experience, I've spent countless hours up there. If you want to count the hours, I can give you the counts of the hours because I've got it all wrong. That's all I have to say.
Any other commissioners that would not speak? I'm sorry.
There's a lot of emotions in the room, there's a lot of people's lives that are affected by this. It's easy for us to say, you know, everybody need quiet, and I know we need to have that in order to have effective meeting, but when you have some that are profiting from this and you have other people that's retired and have spent their whole life for their property, there's emotions here. I'll have to say, considering all that, I think it's going pretty well in this meeting. When you're talking about people that I know I have, that I'm even friends with or I have spoken to, he's not here tonight, but Bob Phillips is one of your house neighbors. He was a veteran, he is now having to go to multiple meetings and counseling again. Because we forget, there's some that when they hear the blast, it don't matter how deep it goes, it goes straight to their soul because of their PTSD. And it has rocked their world. And so they have retired to now live in a nightmare all over again. And even though I know this is a very serious matter and I know that there's a lot that we're looking at on the agenda tonight, I did take that oath. And the oath that I took leads me to different documentations that we are given and that we are to look up within our state. And in doing so, what I found, that our county attorney had filed with our state, and that is the Tennessee Code that he put about ethnic, commit for the ethnic, ethnic commissions for our state, this is what it states, and number five. Number five says, questions and complaints regarding violations of the Code of Ethics, of any violation of state law governing, whether it be directed, it needs to be directed to the county attorney or the district attorney. Complaint shall be in writing and signed by persons making the complaint and set forth in a reasonable detailed facts upon which the complaint is based. It also talks about how, sorry, my phone. It also states that the county attorney shall investigate or if it is given to the district attorney, their one credible complaint against the official or the employee, whomever it is. And also in this documentation, it does say whether we're county attorneys or whether we're appointed to a committee, this is the same, whether you're appointed or if you're an elective official. That in this case involving the possible violation of the state statutes, that it shall then refer the matter to the district attorney for. that it shall then refer the matter to the district attorney for possible outster or criminal prosecution. So the oath that I took, it is, you all are important to me. But just as I'm saying, he is also a citizen. But we have to go about it, whether we were treated that way or not, or whether you were. It doesn't help if everyone keeps doing things or skipping stages. That we have to go about it in the right manner, or we're doing the exact same thing that we're complaining about. And that is skipping steps and not doing what's right. So earlier in the meeting, before this meeting, I went up to our county attorney and asked, had anybody turned anything in prior to this meeting? Has anyone? Have you handed something tonight? Then you might want to ask. But as of the I know of, before the meeting, you told me nobody had turned anything in, correct? Okay. So we need something in writing. There has to be something submitted in writing.
The code has been...
He submitted.
I submitted it before I spoke.
It's in the envelope.
It was a complaint. Yeah, there might be something in this envelope.
Well, I mean, I'm just stating, regardless it is or it isn't, this makes a difference on the floor right now of what we're considering. And I just wanted to make sure that we know what our Code of Ethic is. And that is that everyone deserves to be properly heard and there is a procedure going about. And it's not by saying that, that you're not important, but that is why we follow procedures. And when we don't, and I agree exactly with what Commissioner Smith said, and that is, there is, yes, it's legal. Things can be legal, but that don't make it right. I've spent 25 years of my life standing against life in the womb. Just because abortion is legal, don't make it right to me.
Madam Chair, I just have a couple of questions. Director Schuler?
Sir.
Is it correct to make the statement that the typical people that are on a planning commission are developers, engineers, architects, bankers, or finance, conservationists, or realtors?
Yes.
Okay. Of the current number of members on the planning commission, how many of them fall into those categories?
Probably three.
Three?
Okay, just one just resigned, so.
Okay, so if there's three, that means if, what we're saying here is, is that if you're on the planning commission, you can't do what it is that you do. If you're a realtor, you can no longer go out and you can no longer sell houses. If you're a developer, you can't go out and develop any new land. That is a, we're too far as far as it goes as for restriction. If we're removing these people from the pool of actually actively working in the county and trying to make things better, and we're saying, oh, if you go and do those things on a planning commission, we're going to come after you. And I don't like that precedent at all.
I don't think I said that, Eric. I did not state that.
I wasn't talking to you, Mr. Smith. You're here to listen to write your comments to the chair, please, sir.
Please let Mr. Freiter pay this.
Todd, you're over here shaking, but you've taken this way too far, man.
I haven't taken it far enough, apparently. There's another level. There's another level beyond this.
So I'll make this comment. The mob that is out there in Facebook land decides to go out and plant people's posts for making comments. That's perfectly fine. But I was not elected by democracy. This is a constitutional republic. You cannot, you cannot legislate by public opinion. Legislate by facts. If people that have a problem with that, please leave the county. This is a constitutional republic that we live in. We cannot violate Gary's rights as much as we can anybody else's rights. If he is following the law, if he is following the law, that is the limit of where we can go. If the planning commission, nothing had to come before the planning commission, and Director Schuler, what are the things that have to come before the planning commission?
Developments that could be multifamily, things of that nature, set divisions, things of that nature, any type of zone requirements that must be done, such as a quarry, or state construction, demolition of the rock side, things of that nature.
Okay. And according to the state, does this meet the definition for a quarry?
Now, this is the definition of an area, which is agricultural use.
So this is farmland that is being excavated. So we're now going to tell farmers what they can and can't do on their property, who they can and can't lease it to, and how they can and can't improve it? That's what we're doing. If we try to go through with this, that's exactly what we're doing. Violating someone's constitutional rights is one of the things that we should absolutely avoid doing. And a property owner's rights to do whatever the devil he wants on a farm is up to him. Because if somebody tries to come in my yard or in my house and tell me what I'm going to do or not do, they're going to leave a body back. Not you.
This has got so ugly and it shouldn't have. I mean, really? We are supposed to take an oath to do our job. And literally, I have tried my best to do my job. And you should not sit here and judge what's going on if you don't try to get to the bottom of everything. And I have. I've tried to get to the bottom of this situation. I've heard both sides of the story. Schuler can tell you I'm his worst enemy at times. Gary Bailey can tell you I'm his. Literally, I have tried. I've got friends on both sides of this fence, and it's ugly. It's turned people against each other. And this commission does not, as bad as we hate it, does not have the right to tell people what they can and what they can't do with their land. I personally, I want to know how many of y'all that intends to vote tonight has went to the top of that mountain to see what's going on? I want to know. I went Saturday. I went, I looked, and I was impressed. What they're doing up there is amazing. They're building a road to the top of that. They've got ponds that don't have water in it after all the hard rain we had about a week ago. It's amazing. They are dotting their eyes and crossing their tiggs. And this commission does not have the business of telling some landowner what they can and what they can't do. And I feel for Gary Bailey and his family having to go through what they've went through. I know they've had threats. They've had everything. I, I don't know what to say. He's a taxpayer too. Y'all are taxpayers. We are here to do our job. And to do our job tonight, you cannot legally tell this man how he can use his land and how he can't.
You're not so good. I'm gonna let all of this get passed before we go back again.
Give me a water control check for...
Yeah. We're gonna have to take it right here.
What I'm gonna say is, I went up on that mountain three weeks ago. We stood in this last meeting. And I know Todd had the right to speak and say all he said during Commissioner's comments. I get that. But it very much felt like a public opinion with no trial. Mr. Bailey was not here to defend himself or to answer to any of the things that were said. And Gary will tell you, most of the time, we and him are at opposing odds and we threaten to duke it out numerous times. But I don't know beans about mining. I don't know anything about quarries. And I felt like before I could make any kind of a thought process on it, I needed to go see what was going on. Just like she said, I saw more than one pool. I saw drainage ditches with tiles that is going to alleviate a lot of the problems that was there at the Laurel Court area. I saw that they made some really nice roads. I saw beautiful nutrient-rich soil that was laid over to the side that's going to eventually go back on the land. I saw the end of the contract, which states that it's going to be flat land. It's gonna be covered back over from 1 to 3 acres of topsoil and replanted the trees. So what he's doing is taking, to be perfectly honest with you, what I would do with my mountain, if somebody ever offered me anything for that rock pile I've got, is make some usable land out of it. Unlike her, it is, I know y'all don't like it, but if we were trying to tell you how to use your land, you would be offended. It wouldn't be right.
This is a health hazard.
You don't know that.
Yes, you do.
Have you been up on the mountain?
Ready to argue.
Have you been on the mountain? They won't let you on the mountain. I asked some of your neighbors. I asked some of the neighbors, how about going up there and getting a, get a sock? And have a see, see what you can see. Have a look. And he came off the mountain with a different attitude. It is, they have paved the road, which holds down the dust. I saw the fissure line crack that snakes through the rocks. I didn't see big holes blown in the side of the mountain. What I did see was that those rocks were just tufted up and easy to get. Eighty tri轴s of dump trucks right now, probably, have went out. And right now, they're being deposited in real mountain restructure sites. One was below my house on Morgan Branch where we had a huge washout. Hampton Creek, which is desperate, Shell Creek, and I think Eaton Creek. Plus, we have our branch and Bluegrass. I'm sure Kathy can answer all those. But this is one of our local guys, and this riffraff, it's all that's been brought off there, is being used for our rebuilding projects. That rock has to come from somewhere. And right now, that rock is cheaper through them than it is through any of these other quarries. I don't like this decision we have to make, but I can honestly tell you, if this was beside my house, probably wouldn't have too much of an issue with it after what I saw up there. These guys were called down in front of the Ethics Committee. What happened? Schuler, what happened down there?
Got kicked out.
Got dismissed. That's Nashville. I mean, all I've heard for three weeks now is crooked politicians, crooked planning commission, crooked this, crooked that. What I see out here is a senator, ex-military, a doctor, a farmer, policeman. I mean, fireman. Honest businessmen. I don't see crooked politicians. I've worked with these guys long enough. We're not going to agree on everything, and this will probably be one of the things that we got to break on. T-Deck has been out there no less than five times. They don't know violations. No illegal doings. T-Deck, Attorney Martin, answer me this. Did they find a snot out of us for not having our ducks in a row at the landfill?
Yes.
So they are no respecter of persons. And to say that T-Deck is crooked, that Ethics Committee is crooked, you can't say that. You cannot say that. So, you know, I just think we really need to think about it now. This, I asked for this, I got this. This is all the permits. All these permits were pulled by Acre Construction, Jessica Baker to be exact. You want to look at them? This is stormwater prepared. This is the T-Deck. This is all our specifications that has to be done. The water quality has to be tested every so often to make sure that there is no contamination. So if you want to look at this, it's up here. If you want to look at it in a break, come look at it. It's all right there. You'll see it all. And, you know, I just, like I said, I didn't go up on that mountain to prove anybody right or anybody wrong. I just wanted to see what was going on so I could understand.
We're gonna take a 10-minute break. Okay.
The ground's tight.
Do you have anything about? Yeah?
My first time. I want to give a round.
I just don't want to venture into it.
Uh, people, you know, being disruptive, calling the order. If they don't want to order, you can ask.
Yeah. I think I brought it.
Please take my seat so we can get started. Hey, I'm going to ask the public, maybe your comments, if you feel you need to talk with your neighbor or the person sitting next to you, please go out in the hall. It's a little disruptive to the people up here. And I haven't given any warning. I haven't given you a warning right now. So please do that and be as respectful as possible. If you'd like Mr. Bailey, whoever can speak, or whoever is representing him.
Okay, believe one thing, sir. He already did a drive to Tennessee. Starts with the beginning of this part where I'll start it. In the end of December, around the 27th, we'll get it right in there. I was on one of my nephew's tractor and turned it over. And I'd never met Mr. Baker or his sister. Just standing in front of me. The guy that owns the shell pit over here, he was on for them to process shell. Uh, my nephew, which some of y'all know was on here, they got them to come the next day and turn it over. Back up. Um, I was on it planting trees, shishna trees. I loved deer hunting and all that stuff. And by the grace of God, I lived through it. I mean, over down the mountain. That guy told me to get ahold of Mr. Baker, check that we had some rock. Because I looked at it, and I mean, honestly, for years, I thought it was a curse. It's the rockiest place I've ever seen in my life. As far as dirt, you might have five, 10, maybe 15%. They came two or three times, took some and tested it. In the beginning, I really don't know. And I do remember I did ask them how we would go about doing this. I leased the land to them. It's a land lease. I have not voted. I have not signed. I don't push or anything through that. I don't have the authority. I'm not chairman. I don't have the authority to sign anything. So nothing went forward on that. We did talk about bringing it to the commission, which would be if we was to go to manufacturing. And in manufacturing, that means you have to have a rock crusher or separator. If it would have been brought to you all, it would have been to change it to manufacturing. But we were very hard. We borrowed it. It already met the guidelines. Where it was, if you all would have wanted to know, I mean, I'm sure we would have showed you and told you because some of yous may not like this. But have restaurants, have places to eat, maybe theaters. Some of yous knew. May not mean directly, but knew. Um, I will say with Ms. Monger, I did try to buy that Chris property. I tried three years to straighten up that water mist down there. And it is, every time it rains, the bank falls in, it runs over, runs into Mike Nash's yard, cuts the road out. I can sit and say these people have put pipes in and have almost paved all of it. We got over two and a half inches, almost three inches rain the other day. The lady behind me, Ms. Priscilla, for the first time said she didn't get washed out. So the ones didn't even flow over. Let's get back to the rock crusher. If we would have brought it to you all to change to manufacturing, that's where you all would have got the vote. I'm not saying it's not going up. If they decide to do it, I don't know if they come and ask or whether I come and ask. That's when you all get to say yes or no. But right now, we're meeting the agricultural. And for them, I did require some of it in it. They told me they would pave the roads. Repaved a dang large portion of it. Keep the noise and the mud down. But a lot of the noise, yous need to understand right now, is they're having to build a road 16, 18, maybe 20 feet wide up there. The roads just don't naturally get there. Dump trucks are heavy. So the rock that they are busting is what they're putting on this. We're building a road up through there. Once that's built, my understanding is they want to load it to top, which 89% of this noise will go away because they'll be on the top, not down here beside these houses. I will have to sit and say Ms. Monger is there. I mean, I pushed them to try to be as easy as I could. Not against the neighbors. Yes, it has been noisy there. As far as the house in question, the closest, that's mine. I'm 700 and some feet away from the closest point. We do have a well. It is on one of them. Do have a spring. I'm worried about it, too. It'll be fine. So other than that, like I said, not voted. Not signed nothing. I had nothing to push through because it wasn't brought up because it's already something that's going on. Now, in the end, I've asked for it to be cut plumb flat with a foot to three foot of dirt over it. Turn it into a cow pasture. Stay in agricultural. I never wanted a subdivision up there or anything. My dad asked me to never subdivide it as long as I had it. I'm wanting it. Now, that useless 20-some acres, the goal is to turn it to be useful. That's all I've got to say.
Is there anyone else with Mr. Bailey's verdict that would like to speak?
I'm done. As far as I'm concerned, you can vote any way you want.
I think Miller, Baker's, structure wanting to speak or... All right. So want to take the vote? You want to voting to consider the removal of Barry Bailey as a member of the Carter County Planning Commission?
The item was on there as consideration if there's a motion to be...
I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
It's motion. Is there a second? I have no second, then we will move on to number 19.
We have 13 items coming to you tonight from the Budget Committee. We'll include those as quickly as possible. I know that hour is late. Before midnight. Let me refer you to the August 11th, 2025 Budget Committee meeting. It's in the package. You have a relevant piece of document that's in your packet. And you can find the substance. I'll be glad to explain each item if you have questions. All your answers, if you look through the budget packet, will be relevant to all that you find. If you have questions, please ask. First item, A1, is going to be put into motion. To approve payment to Shouse Professional Services for invoice 70425, adjustments made for lodging. The amount coming before tonight is $62,845.15.
Mr. President, may the second, is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit.
I was like this.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Second motion placed before you this evening is to approve payment to Shouse Professional Services for invoice number 70325 in the amount of $5,123.
Mr. President, may the second, is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit. Motion passed.
Thank you, Chair. Third item coming before you this evening is a motion to accept continued investment donation from anonymous source in the amount of $200,000, which will go to the EMA.
Senator Smith, is there any discussion? All right, so. Jury profit.
All right.
All right, thank you. Motion passed.
Fourth item, it's a fairly long motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to use reserve funds to purchase the replacement of defective firearms. Use reserve funds to purchase rapid defense bags that include a rusty oak armor SBR suppressor, a Rotex gamut backpack, a solution medical kit, one set of... a Vortex gamut backpack tech made solution medical kit, one set of three identification patches and one medical patch and one two-year body armor. Three A holistic panel and to use reserve funds to purchase four fully equipped frontline patrol vehicles and four SRO vehicles, such as a toddler. $179,000.
Commissioner Fraser, second. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit. Motion passed. Thank you.
Fifth item. Make the motion to reserve $1,467,625 from the 5 million provided to the county from the state of Tennessee for the estimated hazard mitigation pre-grant application. Remember, that is 12.5% county match. That's what is equal to that 1.3%.
Second by Commissioner Winess. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit. Thank you.
Item number six. Make the motion to approve county fund, budget amendment 101-2, items one and 10, in the amount of $1,639,577.72, with $745,896 coming from the reserve funds, nothing coming from an unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go.
Item seven. I'll make the motion to approve solid waste fund, budget amendment 116-1, item one, in the amount of $700, with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Burr. Is there any discussion? All right, thank you. Let's go. Jury profit. Thank you. Motion passed.
Item number eight. I'll make the motion to approve health department fund, budget amendment 117-1, item one, in the amount of $2,000, with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Let's go. Jury profit. Thank you. Motion passed.
I'll make the motion on number nine. Motion to approve ARP fund, budget amendment 127-1, item one, in the amount of $62,758, $62,758 coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Fraser. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit.
Item 10. I'll make the motion to approve general purpose school fund, budget amendment 141-1, in the amount of $31,000, nothing coming from reserve funds, nothing coming from unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Is there any discussion? All right, thank you. Let's go. Jury profit. Motion passed.
Item 11. I'll place into amendment to approve the education capital project fund, budget amendment 177-1, item one, in the amount of $20 million, with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from unsigned fund balance.
Second by Commissioner Brown.
This is a bit short of Hampton.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go. Jury profit.
All right.
Give me this up here. Let's take a quick break, please. They'll just go ahead and send me to the ER and I'm in the last three weeks. Can we leave this camera for a minute?
It's not fun.